Good evening, everyone. This is the committee that is going to be talking about that three-way stop sign. And we will open up with comments, I guess, from our chief of police.
Thank you, councillor. So I just want to give you a little bit of background as far as what the police department has done as far as enforcement on Summit Avenue. Not only, well, you know, I spoke about lowering the speed limit, which the council did, so that was one of the things that, excuse me, we were involved with. We've also been doing ongoing extra patrols of the area, both on-duty personnel who are working that area, as well as speed enforcement patrols. We've put up our stationary radar board, as well as what we call the stealth pack, and I think you have some of the statistical information from that, which Scott, I believe, gave to you. So I think this is probably either the fourth or fifth time over the last year that we've put the stealth pack up. It records speeds of vehicles going in both directions. These last two surveys were done, I believe, towards the end of October, between a three- and four-day period. I think both times there was about 1,000 vehicles recorded. Of course, a lot of those are going and coming, so let's say about 600 vehicles were recorded. For one of the reports, the maximum speed was 58. The, let's see, minimum speed was 10 miles per hour, and the average speed of all of the vehicles was 24.68 miles per hour, so below the posted speed limit of 25. And the other report reflected similar results. We had a maximum speed of 45, minimum speed of 10 miles per hour, with an average of 24.63, and that had a total of 1,221 vehicles. The other two or three surveys that we did reflected similar results. I believe the average speed when we did those was 24, right in that range.
Yes?
The second document you have in your packet, and there are some extra packets up here, this was posted online, but there's a few extra here at the podium if anybody would like them, is a report from our city's traffic engineer, who we've engaged services on on a couple of items. So they were already here in the city, working with us on some loop detectors for signalization. So this is a report from McFarland Johnson, and basically goes through and reviews the intersection of Summit Avenue, Wentworth Cove Road, based on the request, a citizen petition to install it, make it a three-way stop. And it talked about the existing conditions, the traffic count, and then industry standards, and, you know, what triggers the need, based on industry standards, for number of vehicles over a period of time, and speed limits, and those types of things. So that's in your packet as well, and I'm happy to speak to that, but Paul Mornihan had the traffic engineers do that. But it was a pretty self-explanatory document, so I didn't ask Paul to be here this evening, but I'm happy to speak to it as well.
Okay. Councilor Bowles, do you have any thing you would like to say about it?
I mean, I rely on this study in terms of the effectiveness and what its accomplishment. There is a suggestion in one of the emails that--
If you could speak up, please, on the--
One of the emails that was reviewed, that was forwarded to me by the city manager, that suggested a speed bump. And I don't know what impact that would have or not have, or if that's an effective way to control speed without--
They can work in certain areas. That was a big trend back in the '70s and '80s with speed bumps, and the downside to that comes into, in this area of the country, in northern climates, is the plowing and those types of issues going forward. So I think over the last decade or two, there has been more emphasis on traffic calming, if you will, trying to narrow widths and do some bump outs, and potentially for pavement striping on the asphalt to kind of indicate that something's there to make it a natural reaction, maybe to lessen speed a little bit. But the trend has really been to get away from speed bumps themselves, not only from the maintenance end of the winter, but also some from public liability, that there have been some issues over the years, is a municipality liable for causing injury or damage by having a speed bump in there? And there's been some nationwide debate on that. So I think there's some other areas that maybe could be more effective, generally speaking, than speed bumps in this day and age.
What kind of areas?
You have to get to that mic.
What kind of areas might be more effective?
A few I just mentioned. So traffic calming is either bumping out, narrowing the traveled way in some areas. We're actually going to be talking about, we're going to put up a temporary traffic lab, if you will, out here on Beacon Street East, because we found that a lot of the cars, when they come around the bend from the parking garage and by Rotary Park, it's a long straightaway to the stoplight at Church Street by the post office. So we're going to see if there's a few areas we could do some bump outs, have the curb come out, narrow the traveled path just a little bit. The natural tendency is to slow down. Again, some communities have gone to what they call speed tables now, so instead of just being a bump that might be 12 to 16 inches in diameter, it's a more gradual rise and a more gradual drop that might span an area of 3 to 4 feet. Those are starting to, I won't say become prevalent, but it might be the new speed bump, if you will, for the era that we're in right now, where it's a less drastic bump that goes up and it comes down, but it still gives the regular traveler that awareness of that and knowledge that is coming up. And those are, again, kind of striped with the hashtag "yellow" striping to bring attention to the fact that you've got something in the road there. So those might be a couple of suggestions to, maybe as alternates, to the traditional speed bump as we know it.
Councilor--
I went online and looked at several reports by different companies on the residential speeding thing, and they all seem to be in the same area and use the same criteria that the chief used in trying to find out, you know, what works and what doesn't work. And out of all of this, their conclusion is that there is no single magic solution to solving the problems of excessive speed on local streets. In fact, various long-term studies have shown that residents will never be fully satisfied with either the volume or the speed of traffic in their neighborhoods. The installation of stop signs and artificially low-speed limits will not reduce excessive speeding, but will increase accident potential for both motorists and pedestrians, while giving concerned residents a false sense of security for their neighborhood's safety. Some of their recommendations, they thought the best solution was, I believe, the chief-- they're called "your speed" signs or "driver feedback," and we have got a mobile, it's radar, and you place it--
That's right.
And I know it was on 106, and it helped me stop quite there. Because the minute you see what you're driving and you know what the limit is, you do slow down.
Right.
And eventually, it becomes a normal habit.
That's right.
And their second thing was police with radar, but of course, this would require manpower.
Right, and like I said, we do do extra patrols, both the sector car and the directed speed enforcement patrols on that road.
But what I've seen with that light is, especially up on Marl Street, is they see how fast they can make that thing go up, not go down.
Some people do do that. I wasn't going to say that, but yes, you are correct.
But it's like it says, people are going to speed, people are going to go through stop signs, they're going to go through red lights, orange lights, whatever. It's the driver that's the problem.
That's right. It's up to the driver to follow the rules of the roads and the signals, yeah.
I know, I know we just can't provide enough police awareness out there to cover all of these areas, because they do it everywhere. I mean, I swear, they think that's routing 500 up there on Marl Street, because they just don't slow down. Wasn't there someone killed over there?
We had a fatality, boy, I think it was over five years ago.
Yeah.
And I believe it was, we call them bridge jumpers, they try to jump the bridge, and it rolled over, and I believe it was a young lady that--
Yes, it was--
--passed away.
She was a girl.
So we still have those individuals who try to see how fast they can drive and jump the bridge, but that's pretty uncommon.
Now, where's the Guilford-Laconia line on that bridge, is it?
I think it's right in the middle.
Is it?
I think so, yeah.
Scott, you brought up the traffic up here on Beacon Street.
Yep.
What's that other light there? What's that thing doing? Blink of yellow all the time, what's that for?
That's because there's a pedestrian crosswalk there, so it's, again, just to try to be a calming that there is a crosswalk there, and as cars come around, they need to be aware. So that one of the things, so getting off the track a little bit, but one of the things we're going to try there is just some temporary cones and areas to bump out, and some indoor-outdoor green carpet, for lack of a better way of describing it, just to show what a little bump out of curbing with some green space would do to, number one, soften the area, but number two, narrow the path and see if that has any impact on the speeds. That's just an example of bump outs and traffic calming, and the way the planning department's going to do that in a couple of places around the city is just to put something temporary there, so we don't go and make a big investment and find out six months later, either it's not working or no one's happy with it. So it's an inexpensive way to try something out on a temporary basis.
But I never see anybody slow up for that light. I mean, they just keep going.
No. I think back years ago, it was meant to be pedestrian-activated, so you would push it to go up, but I think that technology is outdated and not even available anymore. So we are looking at some different options there. One of the things that I had noticed and chatted with the chief on the one stealth survey that did have the speed in the '50s, there's actually a pattern there, if you're digging into the details, there's a couple of those high speeds, the only ones that registered above 50, seemed to happen at the same time of day, a couple of days in a row, almost indicating that it might be one person--
Yeah.
--or a pattern of some kind, as opposed to, you know, continuous excessive speed to it. But I agree with Councillor Berriluchi, said there's not a one-size-fits-all, and in a lot of cases, you know, as our traffic engineer alluded to, you know, stop signs do present that false sense of security, and sometimes can make a situation more dangerous as people are rolling through a stop sign if they're perceived as not, you know, being useful in the driver's mind.
Okay. Any other questions from this board? If not, I'll open it up to the public to see what anybody would like to speak to the issue. Just come up and identify yourself, and tell us where you live, and--
Good evening, board members, Mr. Manager, Chief. Richard Holmes, I live at 84 Summit Ave., Laconia, house before the Governor's Island Bridge. Tonight, we have a few of our neighbors here in support of this stop sign, and just listening to you all now, I might agree that, yeah, a stop sign, you can maybe stop and roll through. If nothing else, that's better than not stopping at all. If we put, if it's allowed, we'll put a three-way stop in. They stop on Wentworth, and they kind of stop and roll through there. But coming down, going up and down Summit is just excessive speeds. The reports are out, the studies are out, the chief has been there, the police have been there, the flashing yellow lights saying "your speed," and the pack, what's it called, Chief?
Stealth pack.
The stealth pack they put in there. And people know, unfortunately, our neighbor, Mr. Lapine, here, has noticed that the stealth, once the stealth pack was put in, a lot of members of Governor's Island have slowed down, because they see it, and they know it. And it was witnessed that someone was in a vehicle, in a pickup truck, trying to take the stealth pack down. A pedestrian drove over the bridge, someone else stopped, don't know who owned the vehicle, I wasn't there, they tried taking the stealth pack down. If you see a stop sign, and you want to slow down and roll through it, most likely, no one's going to get killed. We did have a fatality on my land, as Chief mentioned, I think it was about nine years ago now. This woman died coming over the bridge, very unfortunate situation. We don't want it to happen again. There's a lot of little kids in this neighborhood, the neighborhood's growing, more houses being built on our street. It's endless, and we live there, and we're not making this up, and the chief has been there, the police have been there. I know you have budgets, I know you have only so many employees and so many cars and so forth, but if we at least put a stop sign in, they are going to slow down, and if they see there's nobody coming down Wentworth to come out, maybe they'll roll through. But at that point, it's something to slow it down. I have a letter I could pass forward, if you'd like, from a neighbor who just purchased in the neighborhood at number 7, 7 Summit, I believe, yeah, Gary bought at 7 Summit, the house on the corner. And him and his wife have been walking as new neighbors to the neighborhood, and they have friends on Wentworth Cove Road, and they say that just walking down and trying across and walking bath is just very nerve-wracking. So there's letters here, if you'd like me to, he can't be present, so there's a copy for each one of his. He's out of state tonight. I drove two hours to get here tonight, you know, from Waltham, Mass. to get here. I closed my business an hour early to get here, as soon as I could, to 6 o'clock. This is very, very important to us. Governor's Island, not to point blame to them, but there's 10 houses on Summit Ave., Laconia. The 10 houses, seven of them signed the petition, or eight of them signed the petition that was turned in. The other two were non-reachable. One was Mr. Hosmer at the corner, state rep, I'm sure he would be in support of it, but, you know, eight out of 10 signed it, and eight out of 10 live there. It's not us. We're not speeding on our own street. It's going to and from Governor's Island, it's the landscaper, it's the trash truck, it's the, you know, appliance truck, it's the members of the club, it's the people that live there. We have plate numbers, we have vehicle makes and models that we've written down, we've called the chief. It's a Ford, blue, plate number 12345, just blew by me and almost knocked me over. I'm sure the chief will back me up on this. We're not making this up, the traffic studies show, maybe the averages, I don't know, Brian, the averages have come down. The average has come down, and with great effort, you know, but now Public Works is working diligently to pave the street, because the street's in really bad shape. So what's that going to do? It's going to pump up the speed, right? Sooner it is, quieter your car is, maybe you don't all realize it, we all go a little bit faster. You, me, everybody, I'm sure. And the average, I believe the chief has stated before, is 10 miles an hour over the speed limit is the average speed, the average driver goes 10 miles an hour over a speed limit, so that's why we had the speed limit brought from 35 to 25. When we did that, and we presented that to the city council, that helped. When we've come down here, and we've called the chief, we've called the office, and we said, "We need someone down here," the more they put up the stealth pack, it helps. The more they put up the blinking lights saying "your speed is," it helps. They put up the temporary stand on the trailer, it helps. Am I right, Chief?
Oh, there's no question.
Okay.
People see the police or radar board, they slow down.
So there's no question. So I think that a stop sign, without putting a traffic light in, or a blinking light, or a crosswalk for children and pedestrians to cross Summit Ave., which may come at a later date, but I think at least a stop sign will threaten them to stop, slow down, you want to roll through it, take the chance that there's a police car there, a police car not there, and not writing your ticket, fine. But I think they will slow down and proceed with caution. I appreciate your time tonight. Any questions you need to be answered? I'm here for you all night. Thank you.
Well, we'll see if anybody else wants to speak, and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
My name's Phil Lepine, I'm the resident at 60 Summit Avenue, and I don't disagree with what your stealth packs are showing you. I'm retired, and I sit there all day long, and I look out of my living room, and I'm telling you that there is speeding going on, and significant speeding. I've confronted a few of those people and said, "Hey, you know, let's have a harmonious situation, just bring the speed down." And I mean, they get really belligerent and angry, and, I mean, it's just ridiculous. The speed limit is 25. I know you put that out, I don't know how often you put that out, but I live there every day.
Yeah, like I said, I think this is probably the fifth time we've put it up within the last year, so we understand that's a snapshot of a certain period of time--
Picture of time--
Which gives a fairly decent average when you do it five times over the course of the year. But there's no doubt there are some cars that are speeding.
And there seems to be a message that gets out when you put that out there, when you put the thing out, I mean, there was emails going around, everybody knows what's going on, they were putting speed limit signs out on the island, they were buying signs to put on their own property.
I heard that too, and that may have--
We saw them, I drove around and saw them, so they exist.
I did hear that as well, you can see, and then once you know what it is, people get used to it, but--
I guess what I'm saying, you're taking your snapshots, I'm there every day, we never go away, we're there, and we see it every day. I mean, it's a legitimate problem, and it must be taxing your police officers to be out there trying to catch speeders when they could be doing something else. And I don't know what the cost of a stop sign is, and you know what? If it didn't work, you take it away. I mean, how expensive is it to drive a thing and to put a stop sign up? And if it doesn't work, take it away, do it as a temporary basis. I don't know. It's better than doing nothing, is trying something. That's about all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Councilman, Chief. Thanks for doing your job, we appreciate it, believe me. Excuse me, my name's Brian Iskey, I'm 39, Summit Avenue. Again, it's just a low-cost thing, the stop sign, I don't think it's going to be, you know, a big cost to the city. I do hope and, you know, pray that it helps, but all the things that the chief has talked about have definitely helped. We've seen that, you know, the average speed has come down, and most of the people, believe me, it's most of the people, even the, you know, people on the end, most of the people are very respectful of the speed limit and drive, and are reasonable, but there are a few people, again, that just blast through, different times of the day, some of it's workmen that aren't necessarily residents of the island, some, there's a couple of residents, too, that abuse it from time to time, there's no doubt about it. But anyway, so it's a few people, again, ruining it for the mass. But, you know, a low-cost solution, we hope, is the stop sign, and that's all we're asking for. And we're, you know, like Mr. Lapine just said, Lepine just said, if it doesn't work, we can take it away, it's not a big impact, I don't think, but we'd love to see what happens after that with some stealth packs, to see what it does. But we would really appreciate you guys taking the time to have this committee and consider it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. My name is Nick Zaker, I live at 13 Summit Ave. The traffic is horrendous there, the stop signs, I believe, would help, but another thing that I think would help, that I just noticed in Berlin, Mass., there's a shortcut going to my business from 495, it's a narrow road, actually narrower than Summit Ave., and they've put up these long speed bumps, they're the full length of my vehicle, they're slow, they're marked very well, and I think they've worked very well. On the one road, they've put two of them. They were marked before, they have a sign right at the top of it pointing to it, and it slows me down on that road. And I think something like that would work with, you know, coupled with a stop sign on that intersection. If it's done right, to me, it seems very plowable because of the length of it, you know, the distance, the plows will go over, and I think it would really slow them down coming down that road. I thank you for your time.
If I may approach again?
Well, has everybody else had a chance to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Sue Green, I live in Guilford, on the other side of the bridge. I don't think that this situation is as dire as it's being painted. I think there are some speeders that go over the bridge at excessive speed, and I think a lot of the contractors go over the bridge too fast on many occasions. Mr. Holmes, you spoke about children in the neighborhood, there's one family that has children, they are never down near the street, they're in their yard, and generally speaking, you don't even see them. The other thing that comes to my mind is that I don't see this as a, the stops, this is not a dangerous intersection. I think stop signs, many times, are put at intersections where there's danger. There's no particular danger here. I've traveled that road 100,000 times, and I travel it every day. And there are speeders, but I don't think it's, it's not as dire as it's been painted. And the other thing is, I don't think people on Wentworth Cove Road know anything about this petition, I don't think they were approached. I've talked to three people in the last few days, and they had just heard about this petition. No one on Wentworth Cove Road was approached. And there, if there's going to be a stop sign at the end of Wentworth Cove Road, they need to be participants in this--
There already is one.
If there's a need. And the other thing is, if there's a stop sign, the greater number of people that you're impacting are on the other side of the bridge, they're not on the Laconia side. So I don't really see a need for the stop signs, I think it's a non-issue. And I think if a few speeding tickets were issued, I think that would have a great impact. And as far as the packs that were put on the telephone poles, I only noticed one on the island side, had no idea what it was. So to say that people, there was a network of telephone calls telling people what those were, it's news to me, I had no idea what it was, until after it had been taken down, and I made an inquiry. So I don't really see, I don't see a need for the stop sign. If there's a bad snowstorm, and you turn right to come down that causeway, and have to stop at Wentworth Cove Road, and then accelerate again to get successfully up over the bridge, I think, you know, your forward momentum will be compromised approaching the bridge and going up over in a bad snowstorm, if there's a stop sign, yeah. Thanks.
Anyone else for a first time? Okay.
Richard Holmes, once again, thank you for having me tonight. This is not a Governor's Island-City-Laconia fight, this is not a Guilford-Laconia fight, this is a safety issue. There's about 300 yards before the bridge, between the stop sign that we're asking for and the bridge, plenty of momentum to climb a minor incline. Secondly, there is clearly, right now, a stop sign at the end of Wentworth Cove Road approaching Summit Ave. Third of all, in response to Ms. Green's statement tonight, people on Wentworth Cove Road were here last time that I presented this for petition, they were here. People on Wentworth Cove Road were supposedly told about it three days ago. Where are they? They obviously don't have a problem with it, or they don't have, or they're in support of it, and either way, it doesn't matter to them. Ms. Green made it very clear that it's, in her opinion, that there's no danger here. Less than two years ago, a minivan was totaled with a 75-year-old gentleman in it, pulling into one of our driveways, into Mr. Iskey's driveway, because the rate of speed was so fast, it T-boned him as he was turning into a Summit Ave. driveway, 37 Summit, 39 Summit. Okay, the vehicle's totaled, he's lucky he's alive. The woman died nine years ago. If there's not a safety issue here, then what is there here? Okay? Ms. Green spoke about how the landscapers do drive fast, and there are some heavy speeders, and the workers, some of them drive fast, okay. Well, when I was here last night for the petition, I brought you all a copy of a 25-mile-an-hour Governor's Island Club logoed speed limit that they're selling for $25 to each home that wants one. They designed their own sign, the club, designed their own sign in the town of Guilford, to look like a street sign that may or may not even be legal, and they're selling them and putting them in front of their properties. That's telling me that they have a speeding problem on their island. Well, the speeding problem starts at Weir's Road and Summit Ave. The speeding needs to stop. We go out in the road, and we approach them, we're like this, they speed up and go around us. Speed bumps, sandbag speed bumps, stop signs, speed humps, whatever you've got to do. Governor's Island on Summit Ave. in Guilford put speed bumps in. Certain people complained they took them out. They put a speed dip in. They dug it up, put a dip in the asphalt, they complained they took it out. I think the problem here is Governor's Island now. Now it could be a war, but that's not what it's about, it's about safety. We need to resolve the problem. Is there a fix-all? No. problem. Is there a fix-all? No. Is everyone gonna slow down? No. But again, you put a stop sign up, I'm a fast driver, but it's on the highway, in a safety zone. I'm a very protective driver. But if I see a stop sign, I'm gonna stop. I may roll through it once I see it's secure, but that's my risk of getting a ticket or not. I'm definitely not gonna hurt anybody rolling through a stop sign. But going down a, 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 a road like that, that has a decline and an incline and a bridge, more people are gonna speed than not. I can go on all night with this issue, and I will come back before this committee over and over with more support and, and more data and more information. I don't wanna come back with, there's a death, another totaled vehicle, a little kid got hurt, whether it's one family she claims that has kids or three. I have two children. Mr. Iskey has, has three children. Mr. Lapine has children. He has grandchildren. Grandchildren are coming on the way. Um, Mr. Zaker has children, and he has grandchildren. So are they there 25 hours a day? No. Neither are my kids. But they're there. They visit. They come by. When they're off work, they come by with their grandchildren. So one family having children is not a true statement. A lot of statements were made today are not true. We need your support. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Second time around? If not, back here, this committee. Does anybody else wanna speak?
Well, my only comment is that there isn't a neighborhood in Laconia that doesn't have a speeding problem. Are we gonna put up three-way signs in every neighborhood, every street corner? And according to the chief, they haven't met the criteria. There isn't that number of, uh, speeders at all hours of the day, right?
Yeah, you have the information that we have from the stealth pack for the five times, and be glad to put it up as many times as you want, but according to the statistics from these surveys, the average speed is 24 point something miles per hour.
Yeah. What about, do we only have the one stealth pack?
We only have one, yes.
The, yeah. How, what do they cost?
Boy, we bought this quite a long time ago. I think it was around $2,500 for the stealth pack.
Yeah, somewhere between three and four, I saw.
Probably a lot more now, but yeah.
But they do do the job.
It records the speeds of vehicle. We use them on many, many streets throughout the city. And some streets are more prone to speeding vehicles. For example, Guilford Avenue has a lot higher speeds, a lot more vehicles traveling over the speed limit compared to the statistics that we got here.
Right.
There's some smaller streets that have similar statistics. It's useful to us, because, like you just said, we get a lot of complaints about speeding vehicles. When you ask somebody what's the biggest issue in their community, you would think they would say drugs, or, or, or loud people, or loud parties, but most of the time, it's speeding vehicles. I get it. It's quality of life. Like the gentleman just said, he lives there, he sees it all the time. I, I understand that. And that's why this is helpful, 'cause we can get a real snapshot of the picture of what's going on there, especially when you put it up numerous times throughout a period of a year.
It does seem to be the commercial vehicles too that are the biggest abusers. I know, uh, we have a 20 mile an hour, uh, speed limit in Briarcrest. The biggest abusers are FedEx and UPS. They, they tear through that place.
It's, it's hard to say, because this doesn't show you what the vehicle is, but from sitting up there many times, like Mr. Holmesy said, I go up there, I watch, there's a ton of service vehicles in and out, in and out, all day long, depending on what time of the year. I mean, of course, in the summertime, in the fall, you got the lawn mowers, you got the leaf blowers, you got the plumber. There's a lot of vehicle traffic of service providers. And, yeah, I probably would agree that they're probably more prone to speeding than other people.
I'm wondering about that wider, whatever you call it, bump.
That's a speed table. So what the gentleman was talking about on his road, on a, on a commuter road, doing it, again, it's about that car length long. So you come up and you feel it go, when you get up and you feel it going off, and it's, it gives you similar impact to the traditional speed bump, which is probably only eight or 10 inches wide, but it's more of a, and that's, that's the new approach that some communities have tried in certain areas, are those speed tables.
That isn't a problem with plowing?
No, because it's more gradual. So the speed bump definitely has, you know, the six inch or the eight inch rise to it, and that's a challenge. So it's a, it's a tapered up and a level, and then a tapered back down. Um, I think the plow is still, you know, obviously you need to be aware that it's there, and, and maybe treat it a little bit more delicately.
Well, there should be a sign saying, "Speed Bumper," or something.
There are. And then usually they're, they're painted with a, not so much like a white crosswalk, walking, but a yellow hashtag type of thing to identify it. And some communities have tried that in, in areas too, um, as a different approach to calming the traffic.
Did you get a cost on what it would be to put one here, or?
I haven't looked into it. I, I don't think they would probably be, um, expensive. If you're asking me, could it be something we could absorb, absorb in the budget if that was the direction from the council? Yes, I think we could. I don't think we have any installed in Laconia at this point, so I don't have a, a figure for you this late in the season. Um, again, it would not be something that we could install, already being at November 8th or 9th, or whatever, you know, today's date. It's, it's too late to design and figure out the appropriate location. Um, I, I also don't wanna speak to it in the fact where Wentworth Cove, I'd have to measure the exact distance, but I'm not sure if that was something you would want right at the middle of the intersection, or whether that would be a preferred place to have it, you know, at Wentworth Cove. I don't know the answer to that. Um, I'd, I'd want, um, you know, maybe someone from McFarland Johnson to, you know, look at the street if we were going to look into that and determine what would be the best location for it. Um, because again, you've got a downhill slope coming off of, um, 11B, and then you've got Wentworth Cove teeing into it. I, I don't know where the appropriate place would be, if it would be right at the middle of Summit Avenue, or on one side of that intersection or the other. So I don't have that information for you. But it's something we could look at. It would not be something that could be constructed, um, at this late in the year, just from logistics of having to design it and having the asphalt plants open and be putting it in. We're, we're too late in the season for it.
Okay, well, let's see.
We also received quite a few letters and emails to us, uh, against the signs, we should mention.
Correct.
Yes.
I only see two here.
I have three here.
And, uh, we've had, I don't know, five or six for the stop sign. Well, we had how many on that? I don't think I brought that with me. How many signed the petition to bring it to the council?
I believe there were nine addresses that signed the petition.
Yeah, I knew it was close to, to 10, so.
Nine.
Nine, right. Yeah, nine that signed the petition, and there's, what, six here tonight? So, what's the, uh...
I, I don't see how we can ignore, uh, the study that was done with respect to this, that really says, um, stop signs are not the way to control traffic in this particular situation. Does a careful job of, you know, figuring out what the traffic flow under the worst-case scenario would be. And even under the worst-case scenario, it doesn't justify a stop sign there. Recommendations that, uh, consistent with what, um, Brenda read about the dangers of putting spot, stop signs like this in these areas, and the increase to, um, traffic, uh, problems. So I, I don't, I, I really appreciate that, um, these folks have got an issue with the speed there. I don't think the stop sign is the way to do it. Um, I think that a speed bump might be the way to do it in the future. I don't know. We don't have enough information for that. We could probably explore that in terms of its cost and the, um, intended effect on this. Um, but I don't think a stop sign is the answer, and I just can't ignore the empirical evidence that I've got in front of me that tells me that, and that you so diligently pulled down from the net. So, I guess, with all due respect, I would recommend that we, uh, not put a stop sign there.
Well, we need a motion and a second.
Okay. I move that, uh, the installation, uh, of a stop sign at this time, uh, would be imprudent.
I'll stick with that.
Okay, we have a second. A motion and a second to... What are you trying, you wanna delay this until we get more information on that other?
I, I don't, the other, the other may be an effective way of dealing with it, but I, I think we can deal with the stop sign tonight. That's my feeling. But, um, I'm, I'll go with any way the committee wants to go. I'm not, I'm not invested in-
So, so we could look into that other speed bump type thing?
Yeah.
See where we can-
I, if that's the direction that this committee wants, I can certainly look into logistics and cost and where it might be located and the benefits of it. Separate from the stop sign issue, yes, I can certainly do that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
So it's unanimous, and, uh, I just would like to say that I'd like to have the city manager look into that wider speed bump.
The speed table.
That's right. Come back to this, uh, board with the, uh, specifics and what it would do, if anything, for us.
I will do that.
Don't get me wrong. I'm interested in addressing this issue in, in any effective way we can in terms of the speed issue. Um, I want to thank the, the chief for his efforts. Maybe we could reach out to Guilford and see what, how they might be able to assist in this.
I know I did drive over the bridge and went to, uh, over to, uh, the island, and they have 25 mile an hour everywhere. I mean, it's just unbelievable. And then as you get over that bridge, you see 25, 25, 25. Everybody's got them on their front lawn. So they must have had the same problem, and it's mostly coming from there, I'm sure. But we have a stop sign that's, a, a speed sign says 25. I guess they ignore it on, in Laconia, and-
Yes, they do.
They're okay with it in Guilford. Okay, so, uh, we're gonna wait for some more information from Scott on this other speed bump and when it could be put in, and if we, if we decide to go that way with the council.
I'll bring you the information, and we can continue the conversation.
Okay. All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Aye. We will address it. Some more folks.
Locken, as mayor, I hereby call to order the Laconia City Council meeting scheduled for November 9, 2015. First order of business is, uh, everyone knows we had an election last Tuesday, and all seven members of city council, including the mayor, were re-elected, and we all need to be sworn again and again and take the oath of office by city charter. So the first thing we're gonna do, please, I'm gonna ask the council to please rise and face City Clerk Mary Reynolds, who will administer the oath of office.
You do solemnly swear to faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon you as the mayor and councillors-elect of the city of Laconia, according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire and the ordinances of the city of Laconia. So help you that.
I do.
Thank you, councillors, and congratulations. And, um, now we'll get back to normal business, and as always, we'll start our regular meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I ask the audience to please rise and join Council Brenda Behr in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Note for the record that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Mary Reynolds, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Blair?
Here.
Counselor Bell?
Here.
Counselor Littman?
Present.
Counselor Gadd?
Present.
Counselor Kamal?
Here.
Counselor Bullock?
Here.
Present. Let the record show that all city councils, six city councillors are with us tonight, and that a quorum is established. Also note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and City Finance Officer Donna Woodham. First order of regular business is the acceptance of minutes of the previous meeting. The previous meeting was on October 22nd. The meetings of that, the minutes of that meeting were distributed, I believe, that same night. That must be a record, I think. Um, and no changes or corrections were submitted by the deadline, and I would ask the council now if there are any changes to be made tonight. In the absence of any changes, I will declare the minutes to be accepted as distributed. Next up is our consent and action calendar for our audience. So remind everyone that these are typically items that do not need debate or discussion on the night in question, because they are repeat items that have come to council before and are, as you would say, routine. Tonight, we have one such request, and that is from the Lewathanis Youth Basketball League, asking for permission to raise funds at the Community Center concession stand from December 19th, 2015, through March 19th, 2016. A motion to approve that request would be in order. Counselor Bullock, seconded by Counselor Behr, any discussion of that request from the Lewathanis Youth Basketball League? Alls in favor, please raise a hand. We have six-
Yes.
We have six votes in the affirmative, and that motion carries. Next up on the agenda is citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate time for anyone in our audience tonight who wishes to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Ms. Henderson, nice to see you.
Good evening.
Please identify yourself for the record, please.
Brianna Henderson, Ward 4.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I am here to discuss our city flag. Anybody know where to find the city flag?
Can you adjust the microphone or something? They're having a hard time.
Better.
Go ahead.
This is a, a two-way street.
Could you repeat yourself, 'cause I'm deaf and all.
I'm sorry. Um, do any of you know where to find the city flag?
It's right behind you.
Correct. The question is, why is that the only place we're finding it?
City Hall.
Well, what's the purpose of a flag? First and foremost, I would imagine a flag is meant to be flown and to represent something. So, any of you know how old that flag is?
We're failing this quiz miserably so far.
Her letter says 50 years.
Can we have multiple choice?
It is, in fact.
Can we take, can we take a slight break? Can I Google this?
1893.
Trust me, you won't find it on Google. Um, it is 50 years old. So in 50 years, why is the city flag not being flown and representing the city? Rhetorical question. You don't have to answer. It's okay. Um-
I'd say, appreciate you bringing it to our attention from a historical standpoint. So I, I think you raised good, a good set of issues for us to take back and figure out where we wanna go from here, because it's the first time in my 10 years on the council that that's come up.
Oh, I appreciate that, but I'm so not done. First of all, a little background on the flag. Um, as far as I've been able to research, it was adopted by city council in 1965. And according to Warren Hughes, it was, um, designed by a high school student from Guilford, as far as I can tell. So that is our flag. My, my concern is whether or not it's useful. A flag in a city and a municipality should be a very useful tool, and especially given the many things that happen in Laconia- the many things that happen in Laconia, positive festivals and events. I think that if the city had a well-designed, used city flag, that could be applied to any... Anything that happens in Laconia. It's very much a marketing and branding thing for the city to identify itself as a municipality, no matter what goes on here, whether it's Motorcycle Week, Pumpkin Fest, Coffee Festival, Multicultural Festival, anything that could ever happen in Laconia, that flag could be attached to. There are other communities that are very well-known, and especially because Motorcycle Week is a huge topic of discussion, this week especially. You know, people... You talk to somebody from anywhere, from Nebraska, they're 32, and they ride a motorcycle. They've heard of Daytona, they've heard of Sturgis as destinations, not just because of the motorcycle rally. But you said Laconia, they may not have heard of this. Now, there are other cities that have well-designed flags that have been very much adopted into their community, and the design elements from that flag can be seen throughout the community. Chicago City Flag is a great example of that. It is a gorgeous flag. You can... You can see it anywhere, on T-shirts, flown outside businesses or inside. You can go to the airport and buy a soap that looks like the city flag. You can see candles, you can... Because it is a well-designed, simple element that can be adopted to many things, it could help solve a lot of problems or help identify things in a very positive way. It also gives those who live in the municipality the ability to properly display their civic pride. Like, right now, I live in Laconia, and I'm super proud to live in Laconia. But how do I show that outside of, you know, showing up at meetings and actually saying things? But how do I have a way to display that I'm proud to be here, or I'm proud that I live here, and I can show that anywhere I go? So, my idea to bring to the council is perhaps to open a contest again like there was before, to perhaps redesign the city flag to be more useful, to be a better tool. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Henderson? Just a good idea. Thank you for bringing it forward.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you. We'll get to presentations. Anyone else in our audience tonight? Senator Hosmer, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to you and to all the councillors on reelection. I came a little late. I wanted to weigh in on the Summit Avenue stop sign issue, so I don't have a lot to say except to say I don't support the idea. I certainly haven't seen the evidence and the data to support a stop sign being put in there. My house is on Summit Avenue, and so... But I do like the idea of the council and the city studying perhaps a speed hump that might be placed there. So, that's all I wanted to say today, but thank you again for your service and congratulations. It's great to serve with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, interviews. We have a couple of positions to interview for tonight. First up is trustee of the trust funds. We had a resignation there of Carl Wrights, former mayor Carl Wrights, and the remainder of his three-year term will expend... Expire at the end of March of next year, so we're looking to fill a very short term there. And we have one applicant to interview tonight, and that is Anthony Felch. Mr. Felch, welcome. Please state your name and address for the record, and tell us why you would like to be trustee of the trust funds.
Yes, Anthony Felch, North Street in Lakeport. Excuse me. I just feel it's something I could do to help out the city and help out the trust fund. I don't know if you know, I'm on the distribution committee for the children's auction. We reviewed over 80 applications last year and distributed almost a half a million dollars. So, I think I would know how to do it and follow guidelines.
Any questions for Mr. Felch? Councillor Lydman?
Start to call it Tony?
Yes, definitely.
In terms of the trust funds, it's a little... There's a piece of it that's about the expenditure side, but there's a bigger piece that's related to the investment side. In terms of your knowledge and understanding of investments, can you share what you understand and know there? Someone like Carl Wrights, a former banker, just trying to get a sense of... Appreciate you coming forward from a wanting to contribute, but just as a type of position where there's some expertise needed to...
I would say I don't have a lot of expertise in that, other than my own investments, so...
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You might as well stay right where you are there. Next up, we have Parks and Recreation Commission. Here again, we're filling an unexpired term. Jeff Patterson, as you know, longtime member of the committee, chairman of the committee, has retired and moved to California, and we're filling the remainder of his three-year term, which also expires in March. And we have two applicants for that position, and the first up is Mr. Felch.
Well, Anthony Felch from Lakeport, North Street. I have been a property manager for 24 years now, so I know a little bit about that. I've also been the president of Levitt Park Association for the last three years and been to pretty much every Parks and Rec Commission meeting, so... And I just want to do my part for the city.
It says on your application you've been to most of the commission meetings in the last three or four years?
Correct.
Parks and Rec Commission meetings?
Yep, correct.
I can vouch for that.
Mr. Hamel has too. Councillor Hamel has, as Councillor Baldwin. Okay, any questions on the Parks and Rec application, commission application for Mr. Felch?
What's been your relationship with Levitt Park and the... And the commission?
What is our relationship?
What has... Have you had any issues? Are you... Has it been positive?
It's definitely been positive. The only thing is, is getting playground equipment in, taking care of stuff at the park, and they've done a great job. We very rarely have to do anything... I mean, we had to go perform for funds for our air conditioning that we're going to be putting in, but other than that, we very rarely have a conflict.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Our second applicant for the Parks and Recreation Commission vacancy is Arthur Kirk. Mr. Kirk?
My name is Arthur Kirk, Belvedere Street in Lakeport. Why I think I'd be good at this is I was born and raised here in Laconia. I use these fields. I grew up playing on these playgrounds. I'm raising my children here. They're... They use these playgrounds. They use these sports fields. I've done plenty of coaching in the city for 10-plus years, and I just want to do my part to try to make sure that my children's children have the opportunity to use these wonderful fields and playgrounds as I have and my children have. And it just means a lot because I... I love the city. It's a great city, and anything I can do to help it stay best... Stay great, that's what I want to do, so...
Thank you, well said. Questions for Mr. Kirk?
Possible time commitment to be able to serve?
No, would not be an issue. No issues. I work a day job, and so that meetings would not be a problem, and so...
Have you been to some of the commission meetings?
I actually have not. I do have... I do know a couple of people who are on the commission who actually kind of were saying, "No, you should do this." So, I do know a little bit about it, but I have not actually personally been to the meetings, no.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Kirk?
Thank you for coming forward.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. To remind our applicants of what the official policy of the city council is with regard to applications for appointment, and that is that interviews are done at one meeting, and the actual appointments are voted on at the following meeting. So, we will be... We will be voting on these nominations at our meeting on November 23rd, and you are not required to be at that meeting, although you are certainly welcome to attend if you like. And we thank both of you for coming tonight. Okay, I don't think we have any communications. We have no public hearings tonight. I do have one presentation to make. It was on the agenda last time, and we weren't able to do that, so I'm going to come around here. Mrs. Crowley is in attendance tonight. So, this is a... Grab the microphone here. This is a front porch award. We gave out one last week. We have another one to give out tonight, and I think most people are familiar with these, but in case someone in our audience is not, I'll remind you that this is a program established by the city council to thank and show community appreciation for people who have made an outstanding effort in keeping and improving the condition of their property. And nominations are typically sent into the city manager's department, and we check those out and award... Make awards as appropriate, and tonight, it is my privilege on behalf of all the residents of Laconia to congratulate and thank Mary Crowley of 29 Mass Avenue in Laconia for the work on her home and yard. Couple of things coming up on Wednesday that I would like to remind everyone of. The first is that we will have our annual Veterans Day ceremony here in Laconia at 11:00 a.m. on Wednesday, holiday, November 11th, and would encourage not only all veterans living in Laconia and the area, but also all fellow citizens to attend that ceremony. I believe this year it's hosted by the VFW, and there is a... They take turns with the American Legion, and I believe there is a luncheon immediately afterwards that the public is also invited to at the VFW post on Court Street. So, seems like we always have a good attendance for that event, as is totally appropriate, and would encourage all the citizens of Laconia if they can make time for a short ceremony on Wednesday at 11 o'clock to come down to Veterans Square for the Veterans Day ceremony. Also, a reminder that on Wednesday night, their Motorcycle Week Association, which the city is a member of, is hosting a public forum on the future of Motorcycle Week at the Bellknap Mill on the third floor at 5:00 o'clock, and that session is scheduled to last no longer than two hours. And the purpose of it is twofold. One, to invite anyone who has an interest in Motorcycle Week, its past, present, and future, to come if they have any questions or concerns about the event itself. There's going to be not only people from the Motorcycle Week Association on hand to try and answer those questions, but we will also have public safety officials from the city of Laconia present as well in case there are technical questions being asked that the committee would not be in a position to answer. So, I know Chief Adams is planning to be there, and Chief Erickson from the fire department is going to be there as well, and I believe also there's going to be a representative of the state police present as well. So, that's 5:00 o'clock. So, that's... First purpose is to answer questions. Second purpose is to solicit suggestions, ideas about how to improve the sustainability of the event itself and the marketing of the event itself. I think we're all keenly aware that the eye test tells us that attendance in the last six, eight years has been slipping from what it once was, and merchants in the area, businesses in the area who are in the hospitality business can offer testimony to that fact, especially those who are not right there at ground zero, so to speak, at Weir's Beach. That business isn't once what it once was at Motorcycle Week, and we know that competition for these kind of events has multiplied exponentially, especially along the East Coast and mid-Atlantic states and whatnot in recent years. So, we don't have the whole field to ourself as we once did, and we're approaching in a few years the 100th anniversary of the oldest motorcycle rally in the world that we are the home of. So, this is a... This is an excellent opportunity for myself and Councillor Bolduc, who serve on the Motorcycle Week Association representing the city, as well as other members of the association board to listen, as well as other city officials, to listen to what the public has to say in this area. So, I would very much encourage anyone who has an interest in Motorcycle Week to come Wednesday night, 5:00 o'clock, at the Bellknap Mill, and share their thoughts and opinion, and ask any questions they may have. Next up, citizens request to comment on current agenda items. Is there anyone in our audience tonight who wishes to address the council on an item that is on tonight's agenda in any spot? Okay, committee reports. I know the Public Works Committee had a meeting at 6:00 o'clock tonight to review a request for a three-way stop sign on Summit Avenue at the corner of Summit Avenue and Wentworth Cove Road, and we'll ask Councillor Bolduc to give us a report.
Yes, you're right, Ms. Mayor. We did have the committee meeting at 6:00, and we had people in the audience that spoke in favor of it, and then we did have a quite a lengthy papers on the item before us that did not recommend putting stop... A stop sign there because of different reasons. And so, after we heard everyone that wanted to speak, the committee decided to not put a stop sign there, but to try and have the city manager look into this wider speed bump, or whatever you call it, and see if that would be something that we could put there to try to slow the people down rather than to have a permanent stop.
Somewhere along Summit Ave?
That's correct, yep. So, that it would be before the bridge.
What is the proper terminology for what we're talking about?
It's a speed table, and it's typically about a car length wide, so you can feel the rise up and then coming down, but it's not as drastic of a bump as a traditional speed bump. It's also more user-friendly for public horse crews when they're out there with snowplows and doing that type of activity, and it still typically has some kind of striping and signage so that a motorist is aware that something is coming up that's going to impact the vehicle on the road.
Is this... Are these typically asphalt, or are they metal, or what?
They are asphalt. Probably in the last five or 10 years, some communities in New Hampshire have started implementing them as a traffic calming measure in addition to maybe some bump outs, and bump outs again are taking what, in a lot of cases, is a straight run of road, and they come out a little bit with the curve edge or do some plantings and actually narrow the traveled path, and just subconsciously, when the traveled roadway is narrowed, it becomes, you know, lessened, people automatically just slow down because for that reason. So, there's some new approaches, not necessarily saying that that area would work for any kind of bump outs, but I will investigate as the committee's request to where the appropriate place, if at all, to place one on Summit Ave, keeping in mind that Wentworth Cove does come out into a T right along Summit, and then also the cost to it. And I did stress that they are permanent. I mean, you could always tear it up, but they're not a... They're not a removable kind of a heavy-gauge plastic material, and it would be too late this calendar year to do any kind of constructive of one, but we can certainly bring back the information, continue the conversation, and see where we go with there.
So, they are typically striped?
They do have a stripe to it, just again. Not the white like a crosswalk, which is white with the straight lines, but it's more of a yellow with a hashtag and the thin lines, just to bring awareness to it again. So, part of it is the rise that you feel, and part of it is the stripe. So part of it is the rise that you feel, and part of it is the striping, and the studies have shown that those two components do have a calming effect on traffic.
So Councilor Bolduc, your committee has asked the administration to look into the feasibility of
That's correct.
...a speed table?
Yep.
But you voted not to recommend a stop sign?
That's correct.
Okay. Councilor Behr.
Scott, on the bump outs, would they not be in violation of state regs for widths of roads or not?
No, you would still want to maintain the limits, but the state has recommendations. I mean, some of our older roads don't meet current industry standards or transportation standards as they stand. Some of the roads, like I spoke through in the committee meeting, when you come around here on Beacon East, you've got a couple of wide travel lanes, and people can gain speed very rapidly. So bump outs don't work everywhere. I don't think in this particular situation where there aren't sidewalks to begin with on Summit Avenue, and there's, I don't believe any curb on either side there, it would be a significant project to actually first install those and do those. So I use that as an example, but that would be a road that I would not be recommending we even consider any kind of bump outs there for traffic calming. But a speed table may have an application there. I don't know enough about the, from an engineering point of view on that road, if it does, and if so, where it would be best to locate it with Wentworth Cove coming off of it.
So I'm assuming, given, Councilor Bolduc, given that the general issue is still in play, that we'll keep this issue on the agenda for
Correct.
...the Public Works Committee? Any questions of Councilor Bolduc or members of the committee? Okay.
Thank you.
So at some point, you'll advise the Public Works Committee that you have more information to give, and we can schedule another meeting. Okay, any other committee business that I'm not aware of? Liaison reports? Councilor Hamel.
Yes, we had a meeting Friday at the fire station and paid a few bills, and also just an update that the fire department has moved into the new administration building. They are using the living quarters upstairs and all the offices downstairs. There's a final punch list going on for the new building. They have demolished what they needed to do in the old building, and as of this time, no major obstacles were found. The new doors are going in, the siding's going on. The paving, they were going to do a final paving this week, I believe, but I think we suggested that it be postponed and that a wear of one year on it be done, and then they'll pave it in the spring of next year. They are giving us a cost on waiting for that time because they've got a stripe at the pavement that's there now. But things are going along good. The official date of total acceptance is somewhere around December 24th is the date they're looking at right now, so, but things are moving along good.
So the new building, on the inside, is completely finished now?
Yes, it is.
Just down to punch list items?
Punch list items, there was some control for the elevator that needed to be done. I think it was a wire, probably for the phone inside, I think they said. And then after that, that'll be operational, but everything else is working there on the new site.
Good, thank you.
Would it be appropriate to just stop in and take a look?
Absolutely.
Anytime.
Yep.
I didn't want to interrupt any construction or anything that was going on by just popping in.
Yeah, no, just go to the, is that Folsom Street side?
Yeah.
And there's a
Tremont.
Tremont, is it? Folsom's the next one, right? Yeah. Tremont Street side, that's the new entrance to the building, and the office is right there, and I'm sure the chief or deputy chief would love to take you around.
Okay.
I think there is plans for an open house at some point
Yep.
...for the general public.
Yeah, I think they're waiting, they're still renovating the existing bays, and there's a lot of contractor equipment on site, so we're
Yeah, yeah.
But it's definitely the new building, they've been in for a couple of weeks with the administration, and the platoons transitioned in there and have been using it for living quarters for a couple of weeks now.
So we're totally finished with the parkhouse, then?
Yes, yeah, they've been a few weeks
It's around October 19th or 20th, I think they transitioned in that week.
And that worked very well for them. They were very pleased to be there and have a lake view, so they were happy.
We call it the summer house.
Well, they probably have a lake view, at least in the winter from the second floor anyway.
Oh, definitely.
They've ruined my lake view, I might add, from my
Yeah, you got a nice, you got a nice fence there right behind your house there.
Yeah, I'll be expecting an abatement.
Jim Perron's house, too, yeah.
Any other liaison reports? Okay, time for the city manager's report. Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Included in your packet for the first meeting in the month, you have the economic development report, as well as the financial and operational trends report. On the economic development front, our unemployment rate, which we track with the assistance of the state for Laconia, Bellknap County, Concord, Manchester, and the state are all trending anywhere from seven tenths of a percent to a full percentage point better than the same period of September 2014. So that continues to be positive and hold in a positive area. On the backside of that report, you'll also see we have the September CPIU number out, and we are nine months of the way through the year for our consumer price index urban, which is one of the components of our tax cap, and we are running at zero year-to-date. It was zero for September, so we continue to run at zero year-to-date. I know the council had asked me to bring some mid-year reviews of where we are trending as far as expenses and any opportunities we might have to have some cost savings and some carry-forwards, and we're going to do that at one of the meetings in December, just right now through the October data that we just got, we're still just a third of the way through the year. So we will be doing that at one of the December meetings. On the financial and operational trends front, the second component of our tax cap calculation is the very first item at the top of the page, and that ties into the net gain and construction value from building permit reports. And the building permits run from April 1st to March 31st, which is tied in with the assessing year in state law. We currently run 27.2 million compared to a year ago. At the same time, we were 21 and a half million, and two years ago, we're 13.8 million. So almost a doubling from where we were two years ago, and 5 million and change ahead of last year's pace. So again, positive signals to see that type of new construction and renovation and additions going on here in the city. Through our major revenue collection sources, property tax collection, motor vehicle registrations, both trending right where we expected them to be, no concerns there. The impact fee revenue has quieted down for the last month or two, but again, for any projects that were approved after the impact fees were introduced, those are payable upon the certificate of occupancy, so we do expect to see money flowing in there on a somewhat regular basis. We haven't expended anything recently out of the trust balances for the non-cap reserve other than the money that you did for the preservation of the historic records, but the accrued leave, the winter maintenance, the health insurance, motorcycle week count, fire stabilization are all intact. And on a positive note, at least from my perspective and staff perspective, we don't have any winter maintenance updates for October, where I think two years ago at that Halloween storm, we actually started tracking that in October. So not to jinx us, but that's a positive trend. So I've got a couple more items for you, but I'm happy to take any questions or comments anybody might have on those.
Questions so far?
The welfare trend seems to be up a little bit.
It is. We had an uptick in one of the summer months, I want to say it was
August.
And we kind of looked at it internally and externally, and there wasn't any real rhyme or reason to it. It was just a bump that occurred. Sometimes you might see it if there was a multi-unit apartment building that was shut down for an emergency reason or a fire type of situation, or in some cases, you know, the winter months, you'll see it trend up a little bit more due to heating and the cold weather and those types of issues. So the finance director and I have talked about it and looked at it and tried to just kind of monitor what happened, and we don't have a clear cut answer for you.
About that fire on Blueberry Lane that had those eight units?
No, that was several months before that, so that, I think that was late spring that that happened, so there was nothing, most of those folks were either assisted elsewhere and were not in effect. So it might just be an anomaly, but nothing that jumps out at us.
I'm sure our memory on the net gain, construction value, what that translates into so far in terms of
Last year's number we used was 29, maybe it was 29. something, but it's around the 29 million. It was approximately a quarter of a million dollars was the amount that it equated to in spending on the tax gap. Actually, last year's number at 1.6 was the CPIU, and the 29 million roughly the new value. Both those numbers were within a few thousand dollars of each other, rated at a quarter of a million dollars. So it was an odd, you know, coincidence, but each one represented a quarter of a million. So we're at 27 million, so we're a touch short of that right now. We do expect building permits being pulled should trend and quiet a little bit between here and the end of March, which is the norm, but I would, at this point, knowing that we're at 27.2, I'd be surprised if we did not at least hit 30 million or slightly above that if I had to look on the crystal ball.
Well, that was worth about a point and a half.
Yes, that would equate at about a 1.5, yeah.
Percent?
Percent, yes.
And in terms of the DRA and confirming our tax rate, where do we stand with that?
We are in the queue, and everything that we have submitted, they have verified is there. They have not asked us for additional information, but nor do we have an actual date where they're looking at our information to set it. I know once you're in the queue, so to speak, it's based on the order you got there. All indications our DRA is moving along very well. We didn't have the glitch that we had two years ago with some of the information coming over from Department of Education. There's been some new software that DRA has implemented this year that for most communities and most of the communities in our state being towns have found it very helpful, and I'm not an expert on town government, but how they carry forward their warrant article numbers and their default budgets, there's a good way to carry some of that information forward for them year over year. We didn't see as many so-called improvements on the city side, so to speak, with inputting our information, but I do have to credit DRA and Commissioner Beardmore for being very responsive to communities' needs. So I will go out on a limb and say we will be getting a tax rate set well before we did last year, which was very late due to a couple of reasons, but I guess I'd be surprised if we don't have one within the next 10 days or so if I had to go out and do it. So I would think it would be before Thanksgiving, which means, depending on how the calendar falls, we will get tax bills out shortly thereafter and have them due by the end of 2015. Last year, they actually weren't due until early 16, and I know that creates a little bit of uneasiness for some folks when they're using it for federal income tax purposes for claiming deductions and stuff. So no guarantees, but we seem to be in a very good position, and DRA seems to be moving along very well.
Go ahead, Councilor Levin.
On the motor vehicle registrations, the center budget, in terms of your projection?
We are, actually, last, so this month, we're 34.93% of projection, and we're a third of the way through the year. So 33.33 would have been the target to shoot for, so we're about a point and a half higher than that. I'm glad to see the trend ticked up last month when we were a quarter of the way through the year, so we should have been at the 25%. We just barely hit the 25%, so we ticked up slightly. And over the years, when I have asked the clerk about trends, we do see a significant number of new motor vehicle registrations, and for some reason, a lot of the lease renewals happen in the spring, in the May-June timeframe. So all things being equal, you would think 12 months relatively would be equal. We do get an extra little bump in the months of May and June. So to be up a percentage point and a half over projections at this point, we feel they're running in line and a little ahead of where we anticipated.
Councilor Hamel.
Yeah, the distributions of the, well, not the distributions, but the, where are they?
Reserve it?
Yep, the, I just saw them, I can't find them.
What's the subject?
The fees that we charge.
The impact fees?
Impact fees.
Bottom of page four?
Up there they are, yep. Now, we've been keeping track of the dates that those would go over, correct?
We're nowhere near close to having to reimburse or return any of those, but we are tracking them by date, and it's something we do monitor, but we are a couple of years away.
What's the procedure to releasing this? Is it just a vote, or?
It would be brought to the city council, almost like bringing something out of a reserve account and asking for the council to utilize funds for a particular purpose. And typically, they're used for the, the purpose of impact fees is if new development impacts the community by having to add more parks or add in addition to the library, it's more on the capital structural infrastructure end of it as opposed to being used for an operational expense of heating or lighting or hiring a staff person. So they would be used for those types of purchases. And again, I mean, the largest amount out of the six categories that's there right now is 21,000, so not minimizing collectively, there's 63,000 there, but there's not a real significant
Now, those are divided categories of departments. If they're released to, say, police or fire, can they use that in any form they want?
No, it would still come through the council, and we would bring the request forward, and typically would have to be for a capital type or an infrastructure type of project. So if we were to use some for a lighting upgrade at the library, you know, that would be unacceptable versus trying to hire a part-time physician. If we were looking to do something either at the police station, the building, or the fire station, the building, those would be appropriate uses for it.
Okay. And under the grievances, is there any further updates on any of those?
No, we're still having conversations. Again, our goal is on any of those three to be trying to settle them before we get to arbitration. I know at least in one of them, you read it and you think it's relatively small dollars, and why aren't we looking to settle? We are trying to settle, but the bigger picture is there's precedent setting there where even though this one is a really small dollar amount, you could extrapolate those over to some bigger expenditure items. So all of those are discussions worth continuing, but anytime we can come to an agreement and avoid steps of arbitration, we certainly look to do that.
Okay, great, thank you.
You had a couple of other items?
I did, so I handed out this handwritten photocopy. She just wanted to update you. Other than putting down a final wearing course of pavement on Chapin Terrace, we are completed with our pavement work for the season, and when we presented the pavement management philosophy last year, which was to do some poor and failed roads and also get some roads, as you recall, with the pavement condition index and the 60 on the scale of 0 to 100 range before those streets fall off the cliffs, so to speak, and they cost us a lot more to reclaim versus catching them at a score of around 60 when we can handle it with shims or overlays. We've taken a new approach to try to do a combination of the maintenance and the reclamation, and the goal was to try to complete six miles of paving during the course of a construction year. So this year, those are the streets that we did in the distance of feet, and we were able to accomplish 5.67 miles, so right in the ballpark of the six miles that we were looking to do this year. And we still have some funds that will be carried forward out of the current budget, so we'll have a jump on the paving season as weather allows next spring. That is separate from the amount that will be brought forward to you in the budget that will be adopted for July 1 fiscal year.
On that list down at the bottom of the first list, Apple Ridge has an X beside it, and so does Bissonett. Is there, does that mean they weren't completed?
No, those all were. This was a handwritten kind of a tallying sheet going along, so it's not as formalized as I'd like. You can see the few scratch-out marks when this was first done. Avery, Battle, Dixon, and Tyler only had the base down. No, those have absolutely been completed, yep. So I guess I don't know exactly what the X means on it, but all of that is completed, and the only one we have to do is the final wearing coat on Chapin Terrace.
Could that be done next year, now?
I think it's actually being scheduled for one of the days this week. The weather looks great, and we're in good condition to go with that, so that'll be done this week at some point.
They had a heck of a job over there. I don't know how they got all that pipe in that ground.
That was a very significant project, and that actually took a fair amount of drainage money. So for years, we've been using the drainage study money, and a couple of years ago, as you recall, we started putting money in for, as a standalone item in the budget to do drainage repairs. Chapin Terrace took a fair amount. There was some water, drainage, standing water down there. So again, to go in and make the investment in the streets, it's very important to address the drainage because that's one of the things that causes the pavement life to deteriorate more quickly. So it's a little more money upfront, but it should buy us some very good useful life on that street for some extended years, so.
Yeah, because the water department went in and had to move pipes
Yep.
...and make room for that drainage to go down there, so they did that.
What is the plan on the 1,430 feet of Court Street?
We did that as a maintenance shim, so that started from, I'm drawing a blank on the side street, by the mobile station
Yep, to the town.
...out to the Belmont Town Line. So that basically So that basically was to buy us a couple of years. And we also, as you noticed, from that area by the mobile station into the downtown, to the intersection right down here at Main Street, we did some cutting and patching and some infrared repairs over there. So Court Street is probably three years away from a major comprehensive upgrade, similar to what we did on Union Ave. And we knew we couldn't wait three years for it to fall in the cycle with all that needs to be done, being a main artery coming into the street, and let the road be in that condition. So we spent some relatively small dollars to buy us those couple of years. We will be looking at drainage, curbing, and reclaiming Court Street, again, a couple of years out.
So we bought ourselves two years.
Two to three years. And again, I think that, that.
Was that in the plan all along for this year?
It wasn't. We were actually hoping maybe Court Street might be two years out instead of three and then knowing that it wasn't, we thought we would catch it. So that's one of those shims that we did, I believe, in early October. So that 1,400 feet was relatively cheap money that's going to buy us those couple of years on a major thoroughfare. If it had been a very low travel road, low traffic, kind of a dead-end street, maybe we wouldn't have invested that money, but we think it was money well spent.
So that was kind of a, not last minute, but a?
Once we got through the main thrux of our projects, you know, sometimes we look at, you know, what, how to best utilize the resources left in the remainder of the year.
Anything else on this list meet that same definition?
We did the little stretch on Messer Street, right off of Church Street to the railroad tracks because the utility had been in on the other side. And that part down to Oak Street is in very good condition right now and all the way to the rest. So again, we thought that was some relatively inexpensive dollars to make the entire street up to a good quality, especially where it is a heavily traveled road. So a couple of those. And Stark Street was the final one that we did.
Yeah, thank God that happened. Oh, man, that was terrible. But Court Street, we're still having a problem with the gas company. That's why we haven't been able to finish that street because there's ledge there and they can't put their pipe all the way through.
It's not ledge, it's contaminous.
There's some contaminants there. My understanding, and I think this came before, my understanding is the gas company at this point has no short or long-range plans to be extending the gas any further than they are right now. As far as Liberty Utility is concerned, where they're at with the gas, they're done. So we're not waiting on them to install before we do the road. They've done what they're going to do in that area for the long foreseeable future because we put them on notice that we're planning on doing a major paving project there. And if they need to be under the road, it's got to happen soon and they've indicated.
So they've stopped, right?
They've stopped. So they're not holding us up or we're not waiting on them for anything.
Even in the three-year plan?
Correct.
Just hate to see that all done and then all of a sudden, boom.
No. They are, indicated they are not going any further there.
Any further questions or comments on this subject? You had one more.
I do have two more quick ones. We implemented the bulky item stickers for curbside removal on your trash day on October 1st of last year. We ran the tally through the first 12 months and we sold 375 bulky item stickers. So on an average month, 30 of them are being sold as a convenience for folks who can put out sofas or chairs or mattresses. And again, the $6 they pay goes on the bulky item. It goes out on their regular trash day. They don't have to call or do anything special. And that $6 basically covers the city's expense for tipping it and bringing it to the wheel operator plant to have it incinerated. So been a positive start and we think for those folks who utilize it, it's a good convenience for them. The final thing I wanted to bring to your attention tonight is one of the CIP projects that is a comprehensive project down in the Weers on Lakeside Avenue. That's in the early stages, but those who've been following the CIP know it's been submitted. The water department, if you recall, has had a couple of blowouts down there. They've got a section of pipe that needs to be upgraded, and by upgraded, I mean replaced, down there basically from Route 3 up to Tower Street. Excuse me. As you know, we've had some issues down there with some sewer runoff. We've had the sewer sniffing dogs and whether it's through some failed hookups or some illegal hookups into storm drains. We're going to continue to do some additional site work and investigation this spring with funds that we received through the grant. The condition of the road needs attention as well and there's a little bit of drainage work that needs to be done in conjunction with it. So collectively, staff has been working on bringing that forward as a comprehensive CIP package. A chunk of it's going to come out of the water department, about, these are all ballpark numbers, but about a half million dollars is the estimate right now.
Wow.
About a million dollars out of the general fund, fund for the paving portion of it. I think it's 90 or 100,000 in the sewer area for some of the upgrades. And then discussion on where the budget goes and what funds may be available is also on the back burner, looking at, do we replace this older section of boardwalk down there? That needs to be done. So all of that is in the big picture view. We're looking at it. The significant one, obviously, is the street and the water, the sewer and the drainage. I know the boardwalk is very important. That could be done in conjunction would be great if the funds allow. If not, it certainly doesn't impact what gets done in the road and under the road. The other item that we're exploring right now, because again, if we're going to do anything with it, we should do it now and that's the thought about putting the utility wires underground down in the Weers for aesthetic purposes and the economic development engine that the Weers is. And again, this is one of those every 20 or 30-year projects. If we're going to do it, we should at least see what the cost is involved into it right now. So we reached out to Eversource and they are going to give us the number, go out and take a look at it and put together the number. And we'll have it for conversation purposes. We made no commitment. We do know from some of the folks at the Weers and the TIF group that initially put it in and put together the TIF plan, it was a priority of that group that the utilities be put underground. So there is a potential to use some TIF dollars. There's not a lot in the Weers TIF account right now, but there is a fair amount of new growth happening down there. So without getting into all the details, one of the things that we could do if it works in a number of areas is the general fund could front, we could bond, putting the infrastructures underground. It's allowed by state law right now. I think it was changed five or six years ago to allow bonding, debt financing to bury utility wires. If that was a route that made sense to go and it made sense to use TIF dollars from the Weers to do it and they didn't have it, the city general fund could certainly front a first year or two's worth of payment and kind of have a due-to, due-from and reimburse expenses. So it's nothing that we need to settle on today, but it's kind of, again, that big-picture look of while we're down there right now, what should we be looking at and having conversations about? No one's saying that, you know, the boardwalk can get done. No one's saying that burying the utilities can get done. But we're going to get the information and have that conversation about what it will cost and how we could fund it and is it a priority? Does it make sense? So that's kind of big picture of what we're looking at.
Any questions?
I'm sorry. What was the total for the drainage and that part, close to 2 million?
Streets is about a million. I don't know the drainage component of that separately. I would put somewhere, if I had to put a placeholder, 75,000 as a ballpark range for drainage. I think the sewer, which would now be part of the general fund, that would be user, you know, sewer users, that's about 90 to 100,000. And the water is around a half million. And again, these numbers are early in, but as ballpark numbers, we could be looking at a $2 million project paid for, again, out of different checkbooks. Some of it out of the sewer account, some out of water, some out of the general fund. If we did anything with utilities, this potential to have it paid out of the TIF account. So we're looking and exploring and doing our diligence, but that's kind of big picture, the timing of it. Working with water and the sewer and the drainage, which we'd want to get in the ground first, we would literally be looking to start the day after Labor Day next year. With the water department running their temporary water lines and working the calendar back from when we feel we'd have to be out of the ground and doing some trench patching to wrap it up for the winter, we would be starting right after Labor Day. We know there's business and businesses open in the Weers through Columbus Day or now the Pumpkin Festival weekend. The nice part about it is there's good wide streetscape. You know, water would be focused in one area. So for the most part, while there would be some little inconveniences, the Weers would still be open for business and handle visitors through that area with no problem. That component of the project wrapping up by mid-November, whenever the weather allows and the asphalt plants shut down. And we would be starting it up again in the spring as soon as spring weather allowed with the intent of having it wrapped up by Memorial Day weekend. So we've looked at it and we feel the schedule works, but that staff feeling and feedback we've gotten, that would be the least disruptive through Memorial Day, Motorcycle Week, 4th of July, the summer season, up until Labor Day.
Go. Do you have a follow-up?
Yeah. We could also go into the impact fees probably for part of that. And can we not redesignate some of the funds to different programs?
The impact fees, we could use if appropriate. Again, there is not a lot of money sitting there. So right now, if we were to use the roads' impact fee, that's the largest of the six categories. There's only $21,000 there.
But we can't redesignate any of the other, for anything else?
No. When people, when people paid into police, fire, library, schools, it was based on residential or commercial and it was a more than a good faith promise, but it was, it was, we had to justify the impact fees by the impact that somebody would have on the community as a whole. So we could not go in and reallocate those funds.
Counsel Hamel.
While we're looking at different things up there, you know, the boardwalk or burying the wires, could we look at possibly getting rid of all those parking meters that are pretty ugly looking? It's probably, I don't know, 200, 300, I don't know how many there are, and go maybe to a kiosk system similar to what Concorde has? I know they're used all over the country now. So you just go to one place, you get a ticket and you put it in, on your dash and that gets rid of all the parking meters and all the maintenance on the parking meters, the collecting of money.
Quarters.
Yeah, quarters and all that.
We can. That's a significant investment in those kiosks, but we can certainly run the numbers.
Yeah, just while we're looking into it, you know, might be worth it to clean all that up.
We can get that number for you, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Doyle.
Is that drainage, the drainage problems that are going to be addressed down there, that is going to be Lakeside Ave or is that going to go into the Methodist Campground, Methodist Circle? Because there's a tremendous amount of drainage problems back there as well. Can that be looked at at the same time?
We can. And again, as, as resources are available and, I mean, that's.
Since we're down there, I mean?
We are and we're looking at a couple of, it's one of the streets and the cat alleys, as they call it, is still gravel. So we know we're going to try to do some drainage and pave that last one, which is the one unpaved road down there right now. So I, we certainly will look at anything because there could be some economies of saving. But every, and don't take this the wrong way, but you get a little creep over here, can we go over and do this? And now we can extend over here, we can go there. And all of a sudden, this $2 million project is a $4 million project. And we just had the discussion about, you know, we're going to be in a very tight limitation with the tax cap calculation with CPI running zero. So I don't want to overpromise, but any of these types of things, we certainly can look at. And if it makes sense to get it done, we will certainly try and find a way. But there may be some other things that are ended up sacrificed in the budget going forward. Too soon to tell where it may fall right now, but those are, those are some things just even this far out that we're already looking at.
Just one other comment on that, on the paving, the final paving of that, probably should be looked at to do after Bike Week. Because if you do final paving before and it's hot that week, those kickstands are going to drive right through that new topcoat.
We can definitely.
Especially where you park in the middle now and everywhere else, it would look terrible.
We can definitely look at that. And again, we want to find that perfect window in line with the contractor to be post-motorcycle week and pre-school getting out. We're in a real small window there, but that's definitely on our radar as well.
I hear the questions for the manager. Comments? Okay.
What's that?
New business. Item number one, first reading of a resolution relative to the acceptance and expending of donations received by the city of a total of $3,000 and request to schedule a public hearing on November 23, 2015 during the regular city council meeting. You have a memorandum from Mrs. Woodman here dated November 5 that notes that those donations are $1,000 from New Futures, Inc. for use in drug prevention and $2,000 from the Lake Wenup Saki Association for the removal of milfoil in Black Brook. Section 506, the city charter directs all appropriations after the budget has been approved for the fiscal year currently, I will add, requires a public hearing and a resolution to affirm the funds. Additionally, all resolutions appropriating funds require two readings. So our first motion tonight, please, is to move to waive the reading of the resolution relative to authorizing the city manager to expend, to accept and expend donations on behalf of the city in the total of $3,000. Motion by Counsel Bolduc to waive reading of the entire resolution. Is there a second? Seconded by Counsel Baer. Any discussion of waiving the reading? All those in favor, please raise a hand. We have six votes in the affirmative and that motion passes. So a motion would be in order then to move on first reading of a resolution relative to the acceptance and expending of donations received by the city of $3,000 and to schedule a public hearing on November 23, 2015 during the regular city council meeting. Moved by Counsel Bolduc, seconded by Counsel Bowns. Any discussion? You did second it, correct? I thought so. Any discussion of that motion? All those for approval of first reading of this resolution and scheduling of a public hearing, please raise a hand. We have five votes in the affirmative and that resolution passes. Next item of business is the first reading of a resolution relative to the adoption of RSA 31:95-B appropriation of funds made available during the year and request to schedule a public hearing on November 23 during the regular city council meeting. The Government Operations and Ordinances Committee moved at their meeting on October 26, 2015 to move this recommendation to the full council. This recommendation has reviewed by, been reviewed by legal counsel and is in accordance with state law. Again, pursuant to Council Rule 25-F1, a motion would be in order to waive the reading of this resolution in its entirety.
So moved.
Moved by Counsel Baer. Is there a second to that motion? Counsel Bolduc seconds it. Any discussion of waiving the reading of this entire resolution? All those in favor, please raise a hand. We have six votes in the affirmative and that resolution, that motion carries. So now a motion would be in order to move the first reading of a resolution relative to the adoption of RSA 31:95-B appropriation of funds made available during the year and to schedule a public hearing on this matter for November 23, 2015 during the regular city council meeting. Moved by Counsel Bolduc, seconded by Counsel Doyle. Any discussion of the resolution? Counsel Hamel.
Yes, I wasn't here for the last meeting on this resolution, but I'll vote for the public hearing, but I won't vote for the resolution. I think it's the, I don't want to see the council give up their authority to appropriate or to spend citizen money. And even though it's at a $10,000 figure, I think it should still be a council job to do that.
Any further discussion? Alls in favor of adopting the resolution, move on first reading and schedule a public hearing on November 23, please raise a hand. Vote is six in the affirmative and that resolution is adopted on first reading. Item number three is the sewer tax warrant. This warrant, which I have in front of me here tonight, consists of a printout of all households on sewer-only accounts and are not billed, normally billed through the water billing process. These are not outstanding bills. This is everyone who is billed for sewer only. One copy of the warrant has been provided and will be shared here for signatures on all members of the council in attendance. And we need to sign that before we leave tonight, but before we do that, we need to pass a motion. So a motion would be in order to approve the sewer warrant as presented to us tonight. Moved by Counsel Hamel. Is there a second, Counsel Baer? Any discussion of the sewer tax warrant? Alls in favor of adopting the warrant, please raise a hand. Six votes in the affirmative and that warrant is approved. And I will pass that down that way. Everyone needs to sign that, if you would. Unfinished business, we have nothing that we're scheduled to take up tonight. We have no nominations or appointments to make tonight, so we are down to council comments. Counsel Lippman.
Yes, reflecting on some work that we did when. Yes, reflecting on some work that we did when Mayor Seymour was first appointed, where we took a timeout from a regular council meeting and sort of did some goal setting and, you know, think, if you think back probably four, six years, that some of that stuff is starting to come into play. One of it was, you know, improving the gateways to the city. I think the comment that came up today about regarding the flag, about rebranding and, you know, I think there's some.
Good idea.
That we could maybe talk about some goals that we'd like to set for ourselves as a city, understanding that it's going to be a challenging budget nonetheless, but these aren't necessarily one-year kind of objectives.
So would it be appropriate to schedule that during a regular meeting then?
I think in the past, we've done it outside of a regular meeting, just to kind of get outside.
Like a non-meeting.
A non-meeting.
Well, it can't be a non-meeting.
It was a non-meeting, but it was open to the public.
Yeah.
So we'd be looking to schedule, well, let's get input from other councils. So Counselor Lippman is suggesting a special meeting of the council to talk about goal setting. Any comments, questions?
I think it's a good idea.
Do you want to do this before the holidays or?
Well, after.
It could be after the holidays, given commitments.
Too busy right now.
All right, why don't we, why don't we ask the city manager to search for a date sometime in January? We could do that.
I know shortly after I started here, four-plus years ago, we had someone come in and help facilitate a little bit. Was that a preferred method to have someone who can ask us the challenging questions and get us back on track who's a little bit distant from it?
We did actually, Carmen Lorenz, I think, did it last time, and we also had, you know, like the chiefs of.
We had department heads, so at least we had some interaction.
Yeah.
So someone to at least kind of put a format and structure and could be the bad guy if they have to be.
See what goals that we achieved and ones we didn't, type thing.
We'll work on that.
Okay. Any other council comments? Counselor Hamel?
Yeah, since the flag was brought up, and I think that's a pretty good idea. Is there, can we do like a, what do you call it, go out and have somebody design one or have a contest for a design or something along that idea or maybe that one's just fine?
You want to assign that to a committee or have the whole council talk about it or you don't want to talk about it at all?
I think we ought to talk about it. I mean, it's not a bad idea. We should have a city flag and fly it outside.
I'd pay 10 bucks to get rid of that.
Yeah.
Looks like a Rorschach test.
Exactly. So, I don't know, whatever the council feels. Well, I thought it was under that committee that Counselor Lippman just talked about.
I think, you know, perhaps we should provide some structure to the, so my question then was.
We could probably fold it in with goals beginning of the year there or something. I thought that's what we wanted to do.
Are people saying we don't like this? We don't like the flag?
I think that's what you're hearing.
Okay.
The fact that it's 50 years old and it's never flown from a flagpole.
Looks sort of like a psychological test, you know?
That's what I said. It's a Rorschach test.
No, that's Lake Wanapisaki.
We're all going to be in trouble if whoever designed that in high school comes to the next meeting and says I'm the one.
Better not say nothing.
Although, did I hear that the, the origin of it was from Guilford? Is that?
Well, at that time.
It was in Laconia.
Guilford went to Laconia.
It was 1965, so at that time Guilford High School was going, Guilford was going to Laconia High School.
So nobody in our audience tonight, I guess, is going to take aim for designing this. Okay. So how do you, do you want to put it on a future agenda or?
Well, why don't we put it on with the goals of the council when we meet beginning of the year?
The rebranding concept.
Yeah, exactly.
Just include that under that. Okay. Counselor Bolduc.
Yes, I just want to thank the public for coming out on Election Day and giving us their support, and I just wish that more people would come out, but anyway, we had a good day. Weather was fantastic. I never stood out in an election day with that kind of weather.
I don't believe that.
You had to have a raincoat or a heating pad or something to keep warm, but this was great. And for the people that turned out, I want to thank them.
I've got two items that I'd like to address at some point. One is the tree down at Duncan Dones, and I think we need to do something about it this year in terms of the pavement. I don't know what needs to be done. I'll address it with the planning board at tomorrow night's meeting. I'm not asking anybody to do anything, but I think for some relatively minuscule dollars, we can make sure we're doing the right things for that tree. And two, and I think we'll save this for January, but I think we ought to start the discussion here about the state school property at some point. I'm not asking to start it tonight, but we need to have that discussion because it's in the budget now and it's part of the state's budget, and I don't know where we go and how we go about it, but I just want to make sure that we at least have that discussion.
We have had preliminary discussions of that, but I agree that at some time it becomes appropriate for the council to talk about it as a committee whole, and the January meeting would probably be a good time to do that.
I'm glad you brought that up because I was going to bring it up, but I forgot all about it. But a few years ago, we had someone, I can't remember their name or business, but they went out there and did an evaluation of the buildings. Is there any way that we could find that information? There was a cost that was applied to it and.
Matt has done a, Matt Leahy.
We had hired a professional to go.
I think that's.
I have a copy.
That's a public document. That was Krediri and Associates, I believe was the name, and we got a Phase Two Brownfields grant that allowed us to go and assess one building, and we picked a building that would be atypical of the other buildings on the sites. We've only done one building, but we think the other buildings are of similar time period and have, will have similar characteristics, and we have that report as public. We can get it all to you if you don't have it.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Counselor Lippman.
In looking at that, I remember the punchline, I think, of that being with respect to qualifying for Brownfield funds, that there was a limitation on the number.
Mm-hmm. Yes, so many parcels, yeah.
It was in a parcel, and there was discussion, could you break it up into different parcels and therefore apply for multiple funds? But I think at that time, and, and don't hold me to this because I think the programs change over the years, but I think it was limited to $500,000 for a cycle. Positive to it is that I think we got one of those grants through Lakes Region Planning Commission, if I'm not mistaken. We've done the Phase One, which is pretty much just go out and do a visual assessment. We've done the Phase Two on one of the buildings, I think it was the Blood Building off the top of my head. EPA likes to see the progress and likes to, I won't say award dollars for those who continue to show progress and bring it to the next step, but I think they would look favorably upon an application, but we can, we can dust off that report and get you copies if you need it and have that discussion in January.
You can't apply for funds for reclamation until you own the property.
Right.
That's true, but I think, I think the round of funding, I think, you know, we'd have to look at the timing too, yes.
But answering, answering that question and how Brownfields funding is going to fit into this and what's going to be available is going to be an important part of the city's consideration in terms of what do we do? Do we stand pat? Do we, you know, so.
Counselor Bowns, I'm not sure I understood what you said with regard to the tree.
Neither do I.
Make sure it doesn't get.
Preserving the tree, I think, is this.
There's nothing. The recommendation right now from the arborist that was sort of retained, although I don't think he was actually paid, is that there's some trimming that needs to be done in the tree. But most importantly, two years and I still can't get that right.
That's why they gave you another.
Yeah. You're always so polite. But more importantly, the way they've laid the pavement is right up against the tree, so that has to be moved back and away needs.
So whose job is it to do that?
Well, that's the question. It may be the developers, but it may be the cities, and I'm not answering that question tonight, but we may have to do something with the sidewalk. I've talked to Paul, and we may have to cut the sidewalk short, and they were looking at that.
We being the city.
Yeah. We may have to cut the sidewalk short and do something else to end the sidewalk before the tree or just inside the tree or something like that.
Would like to see that done immediately or?
I would like to see that done in a timely fashion so as not to further endanger the tree. And whether that means immediately, I don't know. I'm not an, I'm not a tree guy.
Let's, let's not just kick the can down the road then. Let's figure out what we're going to do. Can you weigh in on this about what our obligation is or even what our right is?
I can. So the arborist came in and did a great report. We did not retain them. I think he stepped up his, on his own, and I think there were some recommendations about looking to pull some of the concrete away from the root system to allow, you know, better flow of water and natural habitat type of thing. So I'm not sure if through the planning board, through their approvals, we can certainly look to see what was required there, and if not, we can certainly work, work with staff and come up with an approach to.
Do we have enough time between now and our next meeting to get a recommendation?
Yes.
In terms of how we can proceed on that?
Yes.
Okay. I heard for, I was told today that the owner has officially filed with the planning department now a request to have their site plan amended to cut the tree down.
I hadn't heard that. That's news to me.
That's new. I believe that happened within the last day or two.
Okay. Well, certainly that request will impact what we do.
So that's, that's beyond our purview in terms of, that's a planning board issue, but the sidewalk would seem to me would be our.
Right. We'll have discussion with staff and see if there's something we can do with collectively or what the city can do standalone.
All right, so let's, let's put that on the agenda for our next meeting then, please, in terms of action steps. Counselor Bolduc.
They must have put that driveway in according to the planning board's suggestion.
They did.
So they didn't do the problem. It's the planning board that didn't do their job on that tree.
The planning board certainly signed off on it.
I'm not sure that the new pavement did anything per se. It was more with the developers about sightline and looking to remove the tree from vehicular safety purposes and an indication that maybe the tree had some issues, and the arborist was saying, no, the tree could be fine, and this could enhance its survival ability. So let's, we'll put this on for the next meeting for the agenda. Planning board meets tomorrow night, so I'm sure Counselor Bowns will be bringing it up and having that conversation at the planning board level, and we will make sure it's back on your agenda for two weeks from tonight with some action steps.
But I'm sure that that was built according to what the blueprint was, which is what the planning board came up with, so. To get a blame somebody, it's not the owner.
Well, you don't know. We don't have enough information to make that determination. I understand what you're saying, but you don't know that.
Who accepted the thing?
I'm talking about the pavement that was put around the tree. Well, that wouldn't, okay, all right, Armin, I'm knocking out, you don't, you don't have enough information to answer that question. That's what I'm telling you.
I saw the blueprint, and the blueprint shows it right the way it is.
Okay. Okay, so we're headed in a positive direction anyway here, right on the tree, on the agenda for our next meeting.
We are. I'm satisfied with where we're at. Thank you.
All right, thanks for bringing it to our attention. Appreciate it. Okay, any other council comments?
I'm away. Go ahead.
We have no need for a non-public session tonight, so a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
Made by Counselor Baer, seconded by Counselor Bolduc. All of us in favor of adjourning, please raise a hand.